Hi, everyone. Good afternoon or good morning, wherever you're joining us from. I want to welcome you to our third session in the Flourishing at Work webinar series. Next slide please. As mentioned, this is the third session in our series and our Flourishing at Work series webinar series, and it's titled "Learning to Let Go." This webinar is sponsored by the Northeastern Caribbean Mental Health Technology Transfer Center, or MHHTTC, and we're housed at Rutgers and the School of Health professions in the Department of psychiatric rehabilitation and counseling professions. My name is Kathy and I'm the project coordinator of this center, and we'll be hosting this webinar today. Next slide please. The MHHTTC is funded by SAMSA, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, to enhance the capacity of the behavioral health and other related workforces to deliver evidence-based and empirically-supported practices to individuals with mental illnesses. Yes, please visit the MHHTTC network website for additional information at mhttnetwork.org. Also, if you're interested in staying up to date with the events and products that our center is providing, we ask you to please sign up to receive our email communications. You can sign up at the bit.ly link provided on the screen, and this link will also be shared in the chat box as well as in the follow-up email. Following the webinar, you'll be asked to complete a brief survey. We value this feedback and use it to improve our activities and inform our people actively. These surveys are also important because our continued funding is linked to the completion of these surveys, so we thank you in advance for your feedback. We also want to let you know that this webinar is being recorded and will be posted to our website along with the PowerPoint presentation slides within a week of this presentation. This presentation was prepared for the Northeastern Caribbean Mental Health Technology Transfer Center under a cooperative agreement from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, or SAMSA. All material appearing in this presentation, except that taken directly from copyrighted sources, is in the public domain and may be reproduced or copied without permission from SAMSA or the authors. Citation of the source is appreciated. Please do not distribute or reproduce this presentation for a fee without specific written authorization from the Northeastern Caribbean Mental Health Technology Transfer Center. At the time of this presentation, Marian Delphine Rittman served as Assistant Secretary for the Mental Health and Substance Use at SAMSA. The opinions expressed herein are the views of the speakers and do not reflect the official position of the Department of Health and Human Services, or SAMSA. No official support or endorsement of the HHS or SAMSA for the opinions described in this presentation is intended or should be inferred. We encourage you to interact with our presenter during this webinar by using the chat feature. Please post any comments or questions you have in the chat, and I will collect your questions as we go and ask them of the presenter during the Q&amp;A time towards the end of the presentation. During the webinar, a presenter may post questions or polls to you. We ask you to please participate in our polls or use the chat feature to answer those questions. The MHHTTC network uses affirming, respectful, and recovery-oriented language in all activities. This includes language that is strength-based and hopeful, inclusive and accepting of diverse cultures, genders, perspectives, and experiences, language that is healing-centered and trauma-responsive, language that invites individuals to participate in their own recovery journey, language that is person-first and free of labels, language that is nonjudgmental and avoids assumptions, and language that is respectful, clear, and understandable and consistent with our actions, policies, and products. At this time, I'd like to introduce our presenter. We have Dr. Michelle Zechner with us today. Dr. Zechner is an assistant professor at Rutgers School of Health professions in the Department of psychiatric rehabilitation and counseling programs, and has focused her career on helping people recover from mental health conditions and their families for over 25 years, with special expertise in health promotion initiatives. She has worked in a variety of community and inpatient settings, including nursing homes, outpatient mental health services, state psychiatric hospitals, and community services for older adults. In her current role, she has focused on implementation of evidence-based psycho-social practices in psychiatric hospitals, developing and testing health and wellness promotion interventions in community settings, teaching students, training diverse mental health staff on best practice interventions for older persons with mental health conditions, and conducting research. Dr. Zechner's research includes the development of programs focused on multi-domain wellness for people with mental health conditions, promotion of an adherence to physical activity in persons with mental illness, use of proper peer coaching strategies, supporting caregivers of people with dementia and identifying best practices for use with older adults with mental health conditions. She has co-authored peer-reviewed and technical publications on health promotions for persons with mental illness, and has presented her work at local, national, and international conferences. She is passionate about supporting older people with mental health conditions, improve their mental and physical health. So at this time, again, I want to welcome everyone, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Zechner.
Thank you so much, Kathy. That was very long. Anyway, it's lovely to be with you all, and I'm so glad that we're talking about this topic of letting go. I think there is not a topic in the world that could be more appropriate for all of us in this moment, and also for me personally, I feel like this is really... I'm speaking to the choir. I think this is something, a topic that we all need to work on, and this is, you know, part of our flourishing, but it's something that many of us helping professionals are challenged by. So today, I'm really glad you're here with me. I want to explore some of these ideas of work-life balance, identify some of our barriers, of which I know there are many, connect to the idea that the challenges that we are experiencing in COVID and the pandemic and in our personal lives and at work, all of these things are food for growth and a way to rethink and shift our priorities. And lastly, we're going to be talking a little bit about limit-setting at work and some of the strategies for that. As always, I welcome comments. I'm showing my... I only have one screen today, so if you have questions or thoughts, I'm going to invite Kathy to be my interpreter and point them out to me. And otherwise, if I don't hear anything, we'll have some time at the end for some questions or comments. Thank you. Let's start with a pause. I know I need a pause. I imagine many of us need a pause. And we're just going to take two breaths, and in those two breaths, we're going to sit. We're going to inhale, exhale, and be here in this moment. Inhale, exhale. Thank you. I thought a nice view of the trees would be appropriate to think about a pause, and I got myself a lovely calendar, and this was the poem on top, and I thought it was so lovely and appropriate to let it go, to escape easily, travel light, and then try letting something go just to see what happens next, and that's my roommate. So I couldn't imagine a more appropriate way to start something out together. So Kathy, I'm going to ask you to please begin our poll one, and that is to ask you how you rate your work-life balance right now. And that would be excellent, pretty good, depends on the day, or could do better. I also had, you know, a category of help, but then I thought, no, no one wants to fit in that category, or maybe they do, but let's see. So please go ahead and go to your computer and just select how you would self-rate your work-life balance. These days, I have to be honest. I think mine is depends on the day. When I'm really busy, my work-life balance really suffers, and other days when I'm less busy, I think I do pretty well, pretty good. Kathy, do we have a... Can we end the poll now and see how people have voted? Okay. Okay, so most people depends on the day. So you all are like me, which is that some of us really struggle. Thank you so much for taking the time to vote. And some of us feel like they could do better, and a fewer amount of people feel that they're pretty good and excellent. Oh, boy. Well, that's, you know, something to consider and be aware of, is that all of us in this room are people who would not consider that we're excellent in our work-life balance. So if nothing else, that's helpful to know, that we are not alone in these struggles. And I think anyone in the helping professions, this is definitely a struggle. So let's talk about the work-life balance. Americans, you know, Gallup Poll has done a lot of polling of what people's work lives are about. And in the last two years during the pandemic, it really turns out that most Americans are really stressed out, not a shocker there, right? The more Americans are reporting depression and anxiety. Additionally, some evidence suggests that we're actually working longer. So on average, so average, right, it could mean it's a lot more, it could mean a lot less, but on average, people are spending 43 minutes more per day working. And more and more, we're having a difficult time unplugging from our phone, from our email, from work. So it sort of follows us around, this idea of work. It's never far behind us. And I, again, I imagine many of us in the room are experiencing those challenges. One idea I wanted to put out there, and I was preparing for this presentation thinking, you know, what can we do about work-life balance? And something that really gave me some hope, and I want to share it with you, because I'm hoping it will be helpful for you, is that work-life balance is a journey, not a destination. I really like that. It's a journey. It's like a path on those day, like depending on the day, right? We're going to do really well. We're going to get outside. We're going to take a breath. We're going to drink enough water. We're going to take a break for lunch. Things are going to go smoothly. We'll have that moment to ourselves. We'll take a pause. And then there's going to be the day where there's a lot of crisis. Your computer breaks down. Your car isn't working. Your child is ill. There are always going to be crises, always. And then it's a lot harder to find that balance within ourselves or the work-life, or even when, you know, we have a big deadline coming up, more, you know, things related to work that come around. So definitely, I think it's helpful to think about it as a journey, and that's what I'm going to start doing, is say, you know, I'm on a path to being more satisfied with my life. And part of that is letting go, and I encourage all of you to let go of some of the burdens that you're carrying and some of the ideas, and we'll talk about how to do some of that. So what is a positive work-life balance? That, you know, I always think about this, and I'm like, what does that really mean? And I found some great definitions of what it means. It means being able to meet your work priorities and deadlines. So doing what you need to do at work while still having enough time for your friends, socializing, your faith, your hobbies, the things that you do that re-energize you, that support you spending time with family and your kids, and in the same token, getting enough sleep, which we keep talking about, I know. But sleep is really, really valuable to our emotional well-being and our stress levels and nutrition. So eating well is always linked to how we're feeling, our moods, et cetera. Now, here's the one that I always stumble on, and that is not worrying about work at home. This is a real challenge, I think, for many of us who may be working, you know, some of us are working out of our homes. Some of us, you know, are not going into the office and do all of our work in the field. So it could be, the lines can be really blurry and not being in bed at night worrying about work. In fact, I have a joke with my spouse. We used to, you know, have this, what are you going to do tomorrow? And then they'd be like, list, 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 this thing, that thing. And finally, I said, I can't do this anymore. We cannot talk about work when I'm trying to sleep. And, you know, I was like, well, what can we talk about? I'm like, okay, we can talk about big puffy clouds. We could talk about the pets. We could talk about the family, but we cannot talk about work. And the next thing, because that was not a healthy work-life balance for me. And as mentioned previously, this idea that work-life balance is a journey, it could be a cycle. So, you know, we may do really well for a while, and then something dramatic happens. You know, it could be an event at work. It could be an event at home, and then we become more engaged in our work, which makes it harder to balance things out. But why is it important? There is just so much evidence that having a good work-life balance promotes health. So it reduces your stress, which is likely to reduce anxiety, likely to reduce high blood pressure, cardiovascular diseases, other inflammation responses of the body. Things like diabetes are actually related to inflammation and stress. So work-life balance is important because it's good for our health, right? It also helps us with flourishing, which we've been talking about in this series a lot, and growing as professionals and as people and thriving as individuals. It can also help us increase creativity and productivity. Has anyone ever sort of been working on a project and you hit a wall? You know, whatever that is, you're writing notes, you're trying to, you know, work with a client, you're, you know, with your students, wherever you're at, helping someone, and you're like, I run out of ideas. And so then you give yourself permission to step away, take a walk, take a breath, give yourself a little room, and then you come back. I always come back, in any rate, I should say, and I feel so much more energized. And sometimes I can come up with a creative solution to a problem that comes up. And there's so much evidence that suggests that people who get burned out, people who are not doing a great job letting go sometimes, their productivity goes down, right? And that's, you know, at a high level. But actually, we do more when we do less. What? No, we can do more. What's that old adage? We're working smarter, not harder. I think that's what I'm trying to say. So that our work is more streamlined, and we're not spending a lot of effort and more time than we need to on areas that are just going to get us stuck. And it also can help us focus on what we need to focus on and not be distracted by other things. So what gets in the way of work-life balance? Emergencies and crises. I think of all of this list, I think emergencies and crisis. Whenever you help people, you are always going to have emergencies and crises every day. And I know I'm singing to the choir here, and I imagine that gets in the way all the time. But I think that some, there are some other issues that get in the way as well, things like supervisor expectations. So are your supervisors expecting reasonable things of you or of me? And sometimes when that, there's a mismatch between supervisor expectation and what our own expectations are or how much we can actually accomplish, that can really mean a disconnect between your work-life balance, because you'll end up working, 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 and you may never meet the expectations of a supervisor. Also, work culture. Some non... You know, I don't want to speak for everyone here. I've worked in mostly nonprofit and education, and that work culture tends to be, we're there because we care, and we work hard, and we try to make the world a better place. But sometimes it also attracts people who are like, I need to be the champion. I need to be the superhero. And that pressure of, we need someone to save the day, can be really hard. I was working with an organization in New Jersey, and they were, you know, talking about the work culture is, you answer your phone, whatever hour of the day or night. You answer that email within an hour. And that kind of work culture, you know, I think that we have to evaluate what's reasonable for us, given our situation. You know, again, I know that we're, a lot of us in the kind of workplaces where we have emergencies and crisis, and we do have to answer the phone or we are on call. But there are times when we're not on call. There are times when we have a day off, and we really can take that day off, and we should take that day off or that lunch half hour or whatever it is, to set some time away to give us a break. We're going to talk about boundaries in a little bit. Also, self-expectations. I don't know if anyone else puts a lot of pressure on themselves. Hello? I push myself really hard, and that gets in the way of a good work-life balance, because I feel like I should be working all the time that I, you know, that reading a book or, you know, playing my ukulele or hanging out with my pets or my friends, that that's not time well spent, that I should be doing something. I'm a very, you know, I... And I wonder how many of us also have that expectation of ourselves that we don't allow ourselves to do the things that give us nutrition and food and replenishment. Like, I don't mean nutrition like good food, although that's important too, but like nourish your mind and the things that give you hope. And also the priorities that you have in one's life. You know, a lot of, you know, people are sort of at the point in their career where they're like, I need to work really hard because I need to get a raise. I need to move up the ladder so that I can make, you know, more money and I can expand my career, which there's nothing wrong with that. And then at what point is that priority then shift to, wow, my health isn't so great, or my family's health isn't so great, or there are other things that I need to prioritize? Next, oh, I was about to say next slide, and then I realized. Oh, boy. All right. So we have poll two. Kathy, what gets in the way of work-life balance for you? So if you wouldn't mind starting up, we've got another poll. I just kind of put some things, ideas out there. What gets in the way of work-life balance for you? Work crisis, work culture, self-expectations, perfectionism, which we didn't actually talk about, but I think that that's part of that self-expectation as well, a little bit. Or feeling like you have to do it right. If you can't do it right, you know, terrible things will happen. A sense of responsibility, which I think is also very common in those of us who are helping others, or something else. So what are the things that challenge your work-life balance? If you don't see what you would like to hear, drop it in the chat, and I'm going to ask Kathy to shout anything out.
Thank you, Michelle. So the poll has been launched. If there's an other, as Michelle has said, please share it in the chat if you're okay doing so. So we have a response here. It says multiple jobs. It's another stressor.
That's a really, that is, thank you so much for sharing that. That's really, really hard when you have multiple jobs, and I know many people do. And then the challenge is, how could you make some work-life balance when you have more than one job, when you have multiple jobs? And thank you so much, Kathy, for putting that out there. I see responsibility is the largest response of things that get in the way for you in work-life balance. And when you're helping others, it's just so hard to take that hat off and say, I know for one time I was making medical decisions. I was working at a job where I was literally doing some case management and making really difficult medical decisions for other people, and talk about responsibility. I understand that sense of, literally, I need to make the right choice for this person, and their well-being is in my hands, and I really need to make sure I'm doing this. And I do see in the chat someone else put in the unknown path. So to get the unknown and then getting past to the solution. And that's a really good one as well. So thank you, everyone, for sharing what gets in the way for you in terms of a work-life balance. I appreciate it. And it's something to consider, you know, it's something if you're driving in your car and be thinking about, you know, work responsibilities and our own attitudes, like how does that all work together? So remembering balance, finding some balance. So if your day is very full with family, job activities, et cetera, making that time. You know, at the beginning of this presentation, I asked us to take two breaths, which seems kind of ridiculous maybe, but literally, those two breaths, it helped me focus. It helped me kind of re-engage in my task here. And that's something you could do anywhere and anytime, and I know other people have tried it and have found it very helpful. Even if you don't have 10 minutes or 20 minutes to sit and meditate or breathe and look at a rock, you can take a breath or two. Also reflecting. We're going to be talking more about reflecting. And I know for anyone who's come to the other Flourishing series, we talk a lot about reflection. And I think that that's something that we have to be able to do about these issues, because otherwise, we won't have any perspective on where we are, right? Also, being sure to schedule any kind of work time. I mean, I know that it's, sorry, any break kind of time. So using your schedule to remind yourself to take a 10-minute break. Remind yourself to eat lunch. Some of those reminders might be helpful. And not in a selfish way. It's really, again, always letting go of the expectation that you are not allowed to take a break and take care of yourself. And then ask a friend. Like, I was really thinking about, you know, like some of those quiz shows where it's like, phone a friend. Sometimes your friends and coworkers can remind you to balance. I remember one of my coworkers once said to me, you have got to stop working so hard. And I was like, what are you talking about? Of course, this was 15 years ago. Now I understand. Yeah, so friends and coworkers can be really supportive, and family and other social supports for you. Yeah, I see a really great comment here. Work-life balance is difficult when I think I'm the only person that can solve the problem at hand. Absolutely. That, I relate to that as well, and I imagine many of us here in this room relate to that, that sometimes we feel like we're the only ones who can fix the problem. And yet, what's so interesting, I have a friend that I really like her. She's, she does things very well, and she's like, if I don't do it, it's not going to be done the way I would do it. And I'm like, yeah, and guess what happens? She does all of it, and, you know, a lot of different tasks, because she really feels committed to the way it's being done. So that's something to know about yourself and sort of like, oh, is there more time that I can, you know, flush this out a little bit or let up someone else stretch their muscles? Okay, so. Letting go at work. I read this really interesting article about this, but it was basically your thinking about work, right? And what are some things that you can let go about your thoughts about work? So for example, expectations. And I talked a little bit about that a minute ago, where it's sort of like, I have expectations of myself now that are very different than they were 20 years ago. And I'll probably have really different expectations of myself in 20 years about my work than I do now. So it's important to think about, do the expectations you have about the work that you do, are they supportive of where you're at right now? Because we all change and grow and evolve, and our priorities shift and change. Also, supportive environments can help us let go of work, meaning good friends, fun places to be, our faith communities. All of those places can remind us of identities beyond employee. Also comparisons. Boy, this is a hard one. When we compare ourselves to other people, how productive they are, or why, you know, maybe why did that person get the promotion that I didn't get? It's really helpful to sort of say, wow, you know what? Those comparisons are not helpful. I'm unique and special. And really, that person is unique and special in their own way and have strengths and resources, and where would I like to be? So letting go of some of those comparisons, and also the negative self-talk. You know, I'm never going to be able to do this, et cetera. That gets in my head sometimes. And letting go of those kinds of things are really helpful in terms of flourishing and thriving. And also fear, being, you know, concerned about certain things that seem beyond one's ability or push oneself out of one's comfort. I always think about myself and doing training. When I started, I had, I was like, oh, this is never going to work for me. I can't, I can't do public speaking. And now I do it all the time. And I imagine you could think of things that you do. Is there anything that you do at work that when you started, you thought, oh, I'll never be able to do that? Or it really is too much for me to even imagine being able to do that? Like, when you started, you thought, oh, I'll never be able to do that, or it really is too much for me to even imagine being able to do that. I encourage you to drop that in the chat box. If there's anything that you were afraid of when you first started your work and now it's something you do every day, or many times, have done many times. It's really, really helpful, you know, the, the let go. I don't know if anyone has seen um the Disney movie Frozen. I really wanted to use to use an uh picture from that because there's a song in there for those of you who haven't seen that movie. Um, that says, let it go, right? And that's the name of the song. And um I, I think it's a wonderful song. It's, it's really interesting to think of how we might let it go, how we can let go of our regrets or anger uh, uh about work or blame or comparing or judgments or worrying or guilt, fear the past, any kind of, anything that doesn't really help us right now. What are the, how can we let go of those uh pieces of uh information from us? The really interesting thing about letting go of work and work-life balance are techno, you know, the use of technology is really, really challenging. It can serve us in so many ways, technology, and yet it also is such a trap. I don't know about you all, you know, but I am like glued to my phone, has to be with me. I recently lost my phone and it was, you know, a little bit of a, a drama as anyone who has lost their phone knows. Um, and yet, uh, there are ways that technology can really help us. Um, I bet you guys have some tips about how you manage your technology. Um, I came up with a few things like turn off notifications, put it on airplane mode at night if you're not on call, schedule breaks with the reminder feature. Even doing things like podcasts that inspire you. Um, I listen to a lot of inspirational podcasts to, to get me going in the morning. Um, and also knowing the boundaries for when uh you'd like to email. Now, please drop in the chat any technology tips that you use to let go of work a little bit so that you've got a little more space for your home life. I think some of the traps that I've heard from uh some of the organizations I've worked with are, again, this idea of anytime a work notification um comes up, they respond immediately. Or checking email in bed. Oh, I am so guilty of that. Um, anyone else have trouble putting the phone away when you get ready for uh bed?
Um, Michelle, well, folks, um, share in the chat. We do have someone who um shared, when I take time off, I delete all work-related apps on the phone, Outlook, Teams, et cetera. So to remove the temptation to look.
That's a great one. Thank you for sharing that. Oh, yeah, that is a really great one. So on vacation, removing all the work apps because then you just pop them back in and there they are, you know, the beauty of technology there is. That's a great one. Yeah. Um, I, I set up my phone so that, you know, my institution wanted to put a push feature of email on my phone and I don't have that installed. Instead, I have to manually go in the website and enter my information because I don't really want to have that push email feature because it's just too stressful uh for me uh when I'm, you know, having dinner or when I'm relaxing to have that. So some of the traps also would be work-scheduled reminder pop-ups. So if you have a calendar on your phone and it is reminding you of, of your meetings, et cetera, that might be things that kind of uh can trigger people and, and into worry and not letting go. And some of the productivity stuff, I, you know, I think right now we are all doing our best. This is a very difficult time and we're all struggling. And I think that um any, you know, be cautious of the kinds of information you consume about getting things done and being more effective and all that kind of stuff. Only because we are all, you know, doing the very best that we can. And this time, this particular time in the world, um, is not necessarily how to increase our product, productivity. It's, it's really not. We have, we have done the best we can and we have increased our productivity. And now we really need to focus on how can we maintain ourselves? How can we let go of some things? So that we as human beings, not just as workers, uh function and do well. So I'd encourage you to think about any, you know, feeding, nourishing your mind um uh for work in a way that doesn't add stress to you. And also responding instantly to all non-emergency emails. Oh, great. Someone said that that, that was helpful. I'm really glad to hear some of those ideas were helpful to you. Oh, I love it. Somebody says, things that work for me, set boundaries, give myself grace and learning to say no. I love the learning to, I love all of those. And giving oneself grace and self-compassion. There's a great researcher named um Kristin Neff. And she talks about mindful self-compassion and how you can be more compassionate to yourself. And I think that all of us helping professionals need as much compassion uh for ourselves as we can possibly get. And learning to say no, definitely. And there are so many ways that we can um set limits for ourselves, but we have to be willing to do that uh for, for ourselves and for the people that we help. Alright, I'm having some technology moments. Okay. So I don't know why, but hot air balloon was on my mind in terms of letting go. Maybe I was thinking of, I, you know, I'm on a Disney movie kick. Maybe it was up. Uh, but, but letting go, really. So part of it is priming your thoughts and emotions. And someone just said that, basically, sort of, it's shifting our own attitudes and, and, and ideas that we do have to think about this balance a little bit more. And then someone else says they changed their notifications uh to something that's unusual to deter me from answering. Oh, that's funny. Um, and most of them are funny. Yes, that's great. I remember, oh, this is sort of, Audrey. I had a, I had someone that really, every time they talked, it was like not going to be good news. So I had to sort of, I liked the idea of the phone, uh, you know, funny thing. Um, I put Darth Vader music, you know, bomb, but yeah. Uh, so yes, so priming our thoughts for what uh, what we would like to do. Not, not trying to add this as another burden to ourselves. We're letting things go and we're opening up more space to bring in new ideas, new concepts, new ways of being with ourselves and at work. Letting go is self-care. Flourishing and thriving for helping professionals is self-care. And we keep coming back to self-care. And yet, it's really the foundation of everything is we have to be committed to ourselves, really. Being present, saying goodbye to the past and, and making that choice in a way, you know, letting go is a choice. It's a choice to say, I'm just not going to let this hang over my head anymore because it's, it's making me exhausted. And it gives you, again, that space for new people, places and things. And also letting go is knowing when you can be in control and when you can't. You know, there's, there, you know, for example, if things are happening at work, they're changing the roles, the structures, you know, everything is shifting so quickly. There's not a lot of control we have in those situations. What we can control is how we react to it and what we do with that. Um, our actions, we have full control over. We don't necessarily have uh any control over actions of other people. Clear boundaries. Um, one mentioned that earlier. Structure. Um, I, I want an out-of-office sign that is from the beach. Like, I thought that was the best because I want to be at the beach all the time. Um, but setting limits is really actually uh a good communication practice and it's respectful to both you and your coworkers. Um, you know, if you tell people, look, I've got a family or I have another job or I, you know, I've got a lot on my plate. When I clock out, I am not going to respond to emails or phone calls. If you have an emergency, if you're in that kind of job where, you know, you have an emergency, you may text me between, you know, 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, but I'm not available other times. Now, that sounds a little rigid. On the other hand, that means that uh the person understands that you're not available uh other times and that you're really not going to be attending to your email except during work hours, um, which is helpful for people. Also, boundaries uh let us know and remind us what our priorities are. What's most important to you? An example I gave you about calling within certain hours, it may be family time, spending time with your children or other family members, um, you know, having dinner together, that that's, that's the most important thing. And so we know, you know, knowing that uh and letting people understand that. And, and letting go and saying yes to you and your life. Also, boundaries in your own head. So when you're on vacation, when you're taking your break, when you're, you know, wherever you are, you enjoy them and you don't let work uh come along with you. You don't pack your work-life in your head um when you're out on the beach. You're, you're looking at dolphins, you're not thinking about your caseload or your students or whoever it is. Then thinking about your own self-worth. I came across this great concept of workism. You all may have heard of it. Um, it's a concept and I, unfortunately, I, I can't recall the, the name of the, the gentleman who uh came up with it. But the idea is that workism is focusing on work to the detriment of everything else in one's life. And I see that. I see that in uh nonprofits and helping professionals. I see that in for-profit settings. The idea is that you are more than your work, your identity, who you are, is bigger and broader than your work role. And that's important to remember as well. So, you know, not to get lost in, in all of that and let go a little bit of it. That one of your identities is employee, uh worker, but what are, you have other roles too. Anyone want to drop in the, the chat? What are some other identities that you have for yourself, other roles? Grandma, yay. That's great. Absolutely. Dog mommy, parrot, very nice. Student, mother and wife. I love it. Thank you so much for, for sharing some of your other identities. Coach. Very nice, very nice. Yes, and these are all things, we are probably these things and so many more. You're wonderful human beings. You are just, you know, people who are interested in helping others in broad-spectrum ways and caretakers, absolutely, and caregivers. Yes, absolutely. So thank you for all of the, the roles that you play and for, for showing up today um and talking about letting go. Okay, so let's get back here. Alright. The other interesting thing about letting go is we get so much perspective after difficult situations. I feel like the last two years has just been a big, giant, difficult situation. I don't know about you all, but um, there's this idea, maybe you've heard of it, that uh Tadashi and his colleagues came up with at the University of North Carolina called post-traumatic growth. Um, and that is basically the idea that we use those difficult situations and as we heal and recover, we have greater perspective. I think that that's what the mass exodus, the great resignation. Um, why that's occurring is that people are realizing that life is short, that we want to live uh and thrive and not necessarily become, um, you know, workists. Workism, work is, I don't know. We, we want to have a life beyond work. Let's say it that way. That means kind of focusing on yourself uh a little bit or your personal life. Finding those hobbies you used to like. And if you don't know what your hobbies are, I have, I have another friend who was like, I don't even know what I like to do anymore. Um, I, you know, you can go out and walk in a neighborhood and see what catches your eye. Do the things you used to like to do. Talk to the people who know you best and say, you know, what are things that I like to do? And always seek help when you need it. If you try a number of things and nothing seems to be working in terms of letting go of stress or anxiety or worry, it's really important to get that help when you need it, really important. And whether that's from friends asking for help or uh other supporters or even seeking out a counselor. So if you're feeling uh very overwhelmed and that it's really hard to let go of anything related to work, it's definitely time to reach out and talk to someone. There was actually a, uh, researchers who came up with sort of some concrete ideas for how to think about um this idea of letting go of things and work-life balance, et cetera. So they suggest it's, it's basically reflection is part of it where you pause. Yeah, yeah, take the breath. Um, and how, give yourself a moment, you know, over coffee or uh before bed or, you know, when things are quiet and you've got a moment. Check in with yourself about uh letting go of things at work um and in life. Notice any feelings that come up for yourself. Just notice them. Oh, wow, I feel angry or I feel sad or I feel uh response, a sense of responsibility. Note them and then try and reprioritize, like what of those things that you've listed are actually a priority for you um in real time? And then think about the choices that you might have uh that would be different options. If it feels, you know, if you're feeling angry, you might think of, you know, is it time for me to leave this job? Or it may, maybe it's, you know, is it time for me to have that conversation with my supervisor or my coworker or, you know, whatever? Um, or is it time for me to say no to more things? And then try to make a small change. And then check in with yourself, you know, again, in a year and say, you know what? What's going on at work? How's that letting go working? Um, what comes up for me? What are my priorities? A really interesting uh idea uh to assess yourself. Sometimes letting go is letting go of your job. Um, that's a big, hard decision to make. I don't know about you all, but I have definitely had to make that decision for myself. Um, and there are some recommendations that come up about when to let go of a job. One is when your boundaries are ignored. We talked about the importance of boundaries, right? Um, but sometimes uh you set the boundary and people ignore them. That's maybe an indicator, especially when you have more than one of these kind of challenges. If you get more responsibility without the support, uh, one of the jobs I remember I left, I was, I had a lot of responsibility for a lot of people and I asked for some additional support in some decision-making. And I was told basically that they had faith in my decisions and that I could, you know, do it on my own. And I thought, no, I, I don't want to do it on my own and I, I don't, yeah. So that was why I left one of my jobs. I imagine some of these might be on why you've left jobs, but there could be a values conflict of your personal values and either, you know, your supervisor or the agency organizational structure uh priorities are conflicting with your own. Also, if you feel extremely exhausted or unmotivated or dread, if Monday comes around and you're like, oh, wow. Or Sunday night comes around and you're like, wow, I don't know. Um, of course, letting go of a job is really important if you experience any type of harassment or discrimination or even um microaggressions where people are, are giving you a hard time if you're a person of color, if you're a woman, um, if you are LGBTQI plus, or if in any way you're being harassed or bullied. That's definitely a time to consider letting go of a job. And if your work is un, underappreciated or your contributions aren't acknowledged, that's also pretty significant at a time to consider whether or not uh you'd like to move on. Prioritizing your health, of course, uh, we've been talking about the prioritizing yourself. And if, um, and I know in COVID, you know, we, we published a paper last year about COVID and some of the challenges that staff in New York State felt uh faced. And there were so many, I know many of you probably have had health conditions. You may have had COVID um and may have been caring for others uh living with illnesses. So if an agency isn't being helpful in prioritizing you and your health or taking breaks or vacations, then it might be time to move on. And then lastly, if you feel that your skills and expertise are routinely underutilized. And that's, you know, that's when you're doing a job and, and people know your background and they're like, eh, you know, we're just going to have you do something else here. Um, and that can be extremely frustrating. I know I've been in that. And that can be extremely frustrating. I know I've been in that kind of situation as well. For you, what, is there anything on this list that sticks out for you in terms of when it's time to let go of a job? Just drop that in the chat. What feels like would be, you know, really the most concerning? I think for me, it would be harassment, discrimination, and microaggressions. And under appreciation for me are the sort of, yeah, when, when your health is being discouraged and your values being in conflict, absolutely. Skills underutilized and harassment. Yeah, absolutely. So these are the things. It's not like, you know, everyone has to sort of know for themselves, at what point are you ready to move on? At what point is it too much? One of these may not be enough, but if you have a constellation that are really important to you, then it's time to sort of reevaluate what you're doing and let go of the job. Accommodation, absolutely. Skills under utilization. Thanks, everybody. Yeah, yeah. That's important, all of these things. Let's talk about the things that we can do. We just talked about things that were sort of out of our control. But now we're going to focus a little bit on, and I, I don't know if you could see my chat box keeps getting large here. Some of the work habits that might be helpful in terms of letting go are communicating boundaries and responses. We talked about that. Saying no, absolutely. Someone brought that up. And it can be done very skillfully, like, you know, I appreciate that this needs to be done. However, there's a lot on my plate. If you'd like for me to do that, then I need to give something else up. So there are definitely ways you can say no that indicate that you're trying to be a team player, but it's too much. Building in breaks, it's just so important. And also focusing on those things that are both important and urgent. Sometimes I get distracted by important things that are not that urgent. Or on the opposite side, I might get really focused on things that are urgent, but not important. You know, if my students are emailing me, I need to know answer to this question right now. You know, I know that's urgent and, you know, I do want to get back to them. However, it's also imagine of, you know, I have to prioritize my tasks today and know what I can accomplish. So you also need to sort of check in with yourself and say, okay, is this important and urgent? Or can I let go of the fact that I'm not going to be caught up today and, and let that be okay? And then we finally come personal habits, you know, habits and routines are so important to letting go. You know, building in some transition time. I saw a great suggestion here where literally you change your clothes. You come home and you change your clothes to literally like change the scenery, which I, I thought was great. If you're someone who works part-time or full-time out of your house, to create a workspace for yourself. I imagine at this point, we're all doing that and manage technology wisely, as we've talked about. And letting go, let it go, the guilt and perfectionism and sense of responsibility. Because that is definitely going to make you feel burned out and have some compassion fatigue and maybe make you sick and, and nobody, nobody needs that. Are you ready? Are you ready? I bet you are. We have a practice opportunity. So we, I came up with this question, what's something that you would like to let go? Or what's one thing you could let go of? In terms of, you know, this thinking about letting go, we've talked about expectations, we've talked about the things that we do, et cetera. What's something that you could let go of? So I encourage you to think about that and ruminate on it. And so, Catty, I'm going to turn it over to you now. Can I just say one thing? I want to say, the next session is February and it's on healthy positivity. And that you should keep your eyes peeled because we will, I'm going to be releasing, we are releasing a podcast series that is a companion to this. And I've had some great conversations with Tony Zepel, who will be doing it with me. And actually, I think it's going to turn out really cool and I encourage you to check out the podcast if you like podcasts. Catty, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Michelle, and thank you everyone for being with us today. In the chat box, I have included the link to our short, brief evaluation survey. Michelle, if you could advance the slides just to see the QR code. There we go. So if you have a mobile device, you can also hover over and scan the QR code that you see on your screen to access this survey. As mentioned before, we are, Sam's a funded and as part of receiving this funding, we are required to evaluate, evaluate all of our products and activities, training activities such as these. So please take a moment to complete our brief survey. I will send this link also in a follow-up email. As mentioned before, I will, you will receive a certificate of completion as well as a link to the recording of this webinar as well as a link to the slides. They will be posted on our website within seven days of this, of this webinar. Also, we will also send a, an announcement to all of our subscribers. So that's why it's important that you are subscribed to our mailing list when the podcast is launched. So that that way you will be up to date on that. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to us. If you have any questions, ideas, comments, suggestions, anything like that, we welcome your feedback. So I will also enter my email in the chat box so that.
Yeah, I'm hoping the podcast will be launched by the end of January, that we'll have a couple of episodes. And there'll be similar topics as the flourishing series. And they'll be just slightly different because it's more, you know, casual kind of conversation instead of a lecture.
Yes, and we're very excited about the launch of the podcast. And we're sure that you'll find it very enjoyable. Again, we want to thank you all for being with us this afternoon. We hope that the material presented is useful, applicable to your work. And thank you, Michelle, for, for hosting our webinar and providing us with the wealth of knowledge. We hope to see you next month in our flourishing at work webinar session four. If you have any questions, as I mentioned before, please feel free to reach out. If you don't, we hope that you continue to stay safe and well, and we hope you enjoy the rest of your day.